Call to order, please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand. One nation, in which there is no division.
Lisa roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel.
Here.
Commissioner Langrea, let the record reflect Mr. is absent. Mayor Holtzman.
Here. On January 3rd, 2023, official notice of this meeting was given to the Press of Atlantic City, The Mainland Journal, and The Current, and was duly posted on the city bulletin board and on the city website. So, just for the people that are on the Zoom and for anyone here in the chambers, that my thing doesn't want to see. It's crooked. All right. Can you hear me? It's like moving. Anyway, that's why they have the clip one here. See that? For anybody who's here, just so you know, what we do is the first part of the meeting is our workshop portion. And that is where we would discuss any items and they will be voted on the second portion of the meeting. Public comments, portions two. The first one is restricted to only the things that we will discuss that we will be voting on. And then at the very end, there's a public comment portion where you can speak and say on anything. But you'll see in here tonight, it's our reword meeting, so it's a long agenda, but don't worry, I talk fast. We, if you wish to speak, anyone in Zoom, you just raise your hand and Mr. Pakinowski will let you in. Anyone in the commission in the chambers, you come up to the microphone, state your name and your address, and we give people, we try to limit it to about three minutes. If we can't resolve what you're here for in three minutes, then we ask you to call the office and schedule a meeting with the appropriate commissioner. Okay? So we're going to get started. You're not doing it. Commissioner Kreebel, he will be doing the, his presentation at our next meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay. We don't have any department head reports tonight, and we're not discussing capital. The following items are scheduled for action at the 112, 2023 regular portion of the meeting. We're going to have our approval of our minutes for September 22nd, 2022, regular meeting, September 22nd, 2022 executive meeting, October 27th, 2022 regular meeting, and October 27th, 2022 executive meeting. We have an ordinance to introduce tonight. It is 2023-001, and it's the calendar year 2023 ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. This is something that we do every year. The next ordinance is 2023-002, and this is amending and supplementing Chapter 208, Towing Section Number Three, Types of Service, Letter C. And it basically says that the tow-in service for the city of Ventnor has to have a leased property to put the vehicles no more than five miles from the city hall, correct? Okay. My one question with that, Mark, is so once we do this ordinance, someone can't come in during the, throughout the year and say, I have, I've leased this property and I want to be added on?
No, no.
No. Okay. If that becomes an issue, then we would have to do something next year.
Yes.
amended. Okay. All right. So next is we're going to have resolutions that we will be voting on by consent, and they are resolutions, I'm going to go through them. Most of them are appointing all our professional services and things like that. So. 2023-001 is authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for professional service solicitor, Mark Niemad Esquire, not to exceed 96,000. 2023-002, appointing Ford Scott and Associates as a city auditor, not to exceed 64,000. 2023-003, appointing a professional service contract for planning and grant assistant, not to exceed 40,000. It's Jim Rattella. 2023-004, authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for professional services, alternative solicitor and conflict administrator, Parker K. Alfred R. Cerny, not to exceed 35,000. 2023-005, appointing Hank Rovolar Esquire as general tax counsel, not to exceed 100,000. 2023-006, appointing Insurance Agency Inc., Eugene, Syracuse, as risk management consultant, Atlantic County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund. 2023-007, appointing Archer and Greiner as bond counsel, not to exceed 10,000. 2023-008, appointing Professional Benefit Consultant, Inc., as health insurance broker, not to exceed 12,000. That's Terrence Lynn. 2023-009, appointing the NW Financial Group LLC as continuance disclosure agent, agent, not to exceed $1,000. 2023-0110, appointing the NW Financial Group LLC as municipal financial advisor of record, not to exceed 10,000. 2023-011, appointing Blaney Donahoe and Weinberg PC as labor relations counsel, not to exceed 30,000. 2023-012, appointing Pro, is it POG or Prague? POG.
Oh.
Who? Who? Inc. to coordinate and perform alcohol and drug testing services. 2023-013, authorizing a professional service contract for police training to the Rogers Group LLC, not to exceed 17,130. 2023-014, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Atlantic Care for Medical Surveillance Program for Firefighters, Police, and Public Works, and any new hires for the city of Ventnor, as required. 2023-015, appointing a professional service contract for human resource personnel consultant, Cynthia Cotton. 2023-016, appointing George R. Brown as appraiser for sale, state tax court, not to exceed 5,000. 2023-017, authorizing contract with Jersey Professional Management Corporation, and Maria Mento for temporary acting city administrator, not to exceed 156,250. 2023-018, authorizing contract with Jersey Professional Management Corporation for management consulting fees in the amount of 12,150, and that's one line item we usually don't spend, but we put it in there so we have it. Next is 2023-019, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Emergency Training and Consultant, ETC, not to exceed $2,200. That's for basic life support, ambulance services, and appoints a medical director. You have to have a medical director under the state regulations, correct, Mark?
That's correct.
Next is 2023-020, appointing Joel Fleishman for NJEIT Financing Bond Counselor, not to exceed 5,000. 2023-021, designating the official city newspapers that we advertise in, which is the Press of Atlantic City, Mainland Journal, and The Current. It's also, we also post everything on our website. 2023-022, appointing Lisa Hand as our public agency compliance officer. 2023-023 is establishing rules or order and conduct for the city commission meetings, which I already mentioned. State your name, address, limited to three minutes. If we can't solve it, we ask you to set up a private meeting. Next is 2023-024, and that is designating bank depositories. 2023-025, adopting a cash management plan for the city of Ventnor, Ventnor City for the fiscal year of 2023, cash management policy and everything that, all the pieces of a policy. 2023-026, adopting a temporary budget, which means we can, we cannot spend more than 26.25% of our total appropriation. That is a percentage for the current and the utilities, separate funds. It allows us to function before we have an approved budget. 2023-027, appointing fund commissioner and alternative, which is Jim Pakinowski and Joe I. 2023-028, appointing contact person for the Employment Practices Liability Helpline, Landon County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund, Lisa Hand. 2023-029, appointing the JIF Safety Coordinator, Donna Peterson. 2023-30030, authorizing the tax assessor to handle appeals. 2023-031, authorizing the tax collector to charge your interest on any delinquent taxes, property, and/or sewer after the due date for the payment of the same and attending grace period for the year of 2023. 2023-032, authorizing tax collector to process property and/or sewer tax refunds and cancellation of refund or delinquency of less than $10 for the year of 2023. 2023-033, authorizing public employee bonds. 2023-034, appointing a police custodial records, which is our chief Fuster. 2023-035, appointing the Class Three members to our planning board. 2023-036, appointing the planning board for the year of 2023. 2023-037, appointing the Green Team Advisory Committee for the year. 2023-038, appointing the 2023 Municipal Alliance Committee. 2023-039, appointing individuals to the Ad Hoc Citizen Advisory Committee. 2023-040, appointing members of the city of the Ventnor Creative Team, or Ventnor Arts Alliance. 2023-041, appointing Tom, Thomas M. Halpin as our fire official. 2023-042, authorizing the Employee Assistance Program Services for the year, which is given to Atlantic Care Behavioral Health. 2023-043, setting the 2023 city commission meeting schedule. 2023-044, allows us to self-examine our municipal budget. If you are considered fiscally sound, the local government services, they don't examine the budget. They allow us to do self-examination. So kudos to us, Amy and the finance and Maria. 2023-045, authorizing the waiver of fees for applications for special events for the city-sponsored events for the year. 2023-046, authorizing submission of application for fiscal grant cycle, October 2020 through June of 2025. 2023-047, supporting the Governor's Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse, DMHAS Youth Leadership Grant. 2023-048, adopting a wellness policy in the city of Ventnor. Sorry, Applebaum heads that from our fire, our finance department. She does a great job. One piece of that resolution is we have to eliminate food. We don't supply food. Next is 2023-049, authorizing acceptance of an agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management to purchase vehicles under the Sourcewell Cooperative Pricing Agreement. 2023-050, authorizing a refund in the amount of $1,671.35, the Trident Environmental Consultants LLC. 2023-051, authorizing the city of Ventnor City to enter into a revocable license agreement concerning the property of 300 North Dudley Avenue. 2023-052, refunding short-term rental payment to Michael Doffey in the amount of 350. It wasn't due until January. 2023-053, authorizing closing out escrow accounts. 2023-054, supporting authorizing the fiscal year 2022 Local Recreation Improvement Grant application funded by the State of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, which we will use to refurbish the playground on Suffolk Avenue and volleyball courts and things like that. 2023, excuse me. 2023-055, authorizing an award of contract for Level Three EV charging station at the city of Ventnor Library to Brian Electric using the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Cooperative. 2023-056, authorizing agreement for code red emergency notification system between the city of Ventnor and Onsob LLC. 2023-057, authorizing the execution of a tax abatement for 102 South Victoria Avenue. 2023-058, authorizing the execution of a tax abatement for 109 Cambridge Avenue. 2023-059, execution, authorizing the execution of a tax abatement note for 107 Cambridge Avenue. 2023-060, tax abatement agreement for 316 North Suffolk Avenue. 2023-061, authorizing a tax abatement agreement for 612 North Dudley Avenue. Another resolution that was added on at the bench is 2023-062, and that is supporting the efforts of former Senator, State Senators, William Gormley for a study of Bader Field to assist with the Back Bay flooding mitigation. Okay. I'm still breathing. Then we will have approval of bills and payroll. You have to do it, man. Approval of bills and payroll. We don't have any discussion with you, right? Correct?
No, you're not.
Okay. And now we were, we are at the public portion. So. I will have a, ask for a motion to open to the public, and this is for anyone on Zoom. Raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Mr. Pakinowski will bring you in. Anyone in the chambers, come up to the microphone. This is on the items that I just read off. This is the portion that you speak on only those items. So do I have a motion to open public portion?
Motion open public portion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I have all Lee Whitman on Zoom who wishes to speak.
Okay. What, what's the name?
Lee Whitman.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Lee Whitman. I'm at 4800 Boardwalk Apartment 1707. I'm part of the Green Team. I would just like to thank the council for reapproving the Green Team, and we hope to do even more things next year.
You do a great job. Thank you so much. You and the whole team.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Talk to you soon.
Thanks, Lee. Anyone else, Jim?
No.
Anyone else? We're good? Okay. Do I have a motion to close public portion?
Motion to close public portion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to close the workshop portion of the meeting and call to order the regular portion of our meeting?
Motion to close workshop portion and call to order regular meeting.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So first we have approval of our minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 22nd, 2022 regular, September 22nd, 2022 executive, October 27th, 2022 regular, and October 27th, 2022 executive?
Motion to approve all minutes as described.
I'll second it. Lisa roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Do I have a motion to introduce ordinance 2022-001?
Motion to introduce ordinance 2022-001.
I'll second that. Lisa roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Do I have a motion to introduce ordinance 2022-002?
Motion to introduce ordinance 2022-002.
I'll second it. Lisa roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Do I have a motion to adopt resolutions by consent 2023-001 through 2023-062?
Motion to adopt resolutions as described.
Okay. I'll second that. Lisa roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Hey. Amy, our controller, can you please give us the amount of payrolls and bills for this period?
Payroll period is 1,226,487,000 in 1927. And payable 654,032,250.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve bills and payrolls stated from our controller?
Motion to approve bills and payrolls.
Okay. I'll second that. Lisa roll call, please.
Commissioner Kreebel?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. We don't have any announcements of safety. Do we have any commissioner comments or reports?
Very brief. I have one, just a, just a sort of a thank you and a kudos to, to Chief Cahill and in our weekly meetings with, and with Maria. And we've, we've always had on our list since 2016 to improve our, our ambulance billing. And over the years, it's been very erratic and unpredictable. It started out in 2016 and 2017 with a company that required paper invoices for us to receive, and it had to be mailed and, or picked up, physically picked up and taken, and then, and then instituted. And our revenues, and we're not doing anything differently. We're not billing anybody differently. We're not pursuing a thing, any claims, any differently. We're just doing the work in a more efficient fashion with a new company. And it's grown in 2017, up and down in the 180,000 to sometimes up and to 200,000, sometimes down, sometimes disappeared off the radar altogether because we just weren't communicating correctly. We have a new company that exceeded our budget in the first seven months of the year. And in December in 2022, we're looking at a revenue of $306,000, which is, you know, 1.5 cents on our, in our budget and roughly in revenue.
Good cut. Yep.
Um, and, and we're not doing anything differently. We're just hiring the right people, managing them, and paying attention to the bills. It's a big, it's a big deal.
I remember when we first got in office, the disaster.
It was always, there was always a problem. There was always miscommunication. There was always something that didn't feel right.
Right.
And we.
If you don't have the right people doing.
Right.
The right outside company doing the work and working with you.
Yeah. We're doing the work. We're, we're, we're providing the service. We're working within this, any, every guideline, and it's all electronic now. So I actually sat with one of the firemen and saw how they entered these things. And they're very, it's very complete. There's a lot of information that goes on. And, and it's, 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 it helps our compliance. So.
We need revenue. Thank you. Okay. Next will be the public portion where you can talk about anything. Again, state, state your name, your address, and we like to limit it to three minutes. So do I have a motion to open public comment?
Motion open public comment.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. It's now open to the public. If anyone out there wants to speak on anything, everything, anything, you have to come up to the microphone if you don't mind. Right there.
Okay. Yeah. I've never been to this office, so I'm not sure how it operates.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Carlino. I live at the Shalom House. Currently, before that, I lived in Ventnor Heights for 37 years. Um, my concern is the 5G towers that have been put up, number one, on the water tank by this, behind the school. And number two, the other one is directly sandwiched between Shalom House and Margate Terrace. If you read the studies on it, I'm also a nurse, retired at this juncture in time. If you read the studies on it, it's not advisable for these towers to be placed near schools or elderly. And I just, I'm very, very concerned. Since I've moved in this building, I have never slept through the night, period. I don't know if it's related to this. You know, I've been trying to find out, but there's a lot of people there in that senior citizen building that are feeble, not really independent living in both areas. And I'm concerned for my safety, as well as the safety and health of the other people, and why this wasn't put in an area. My other concern is, okay, we have the 5G towers. I understand that, that it's very hard to stop this once it's in play. However, my concern is now that they're in here, who's going to do the radiation testing? I took pictures today and I parked, um, I would say where you're sitting, Mayor, maybe to that door, to where you're sitting. My apartment is directly across from these towers. Now, when I got out of my car today, there was all pictures of caution, radiation exposure. I mean, when you're out, when you're getting out of your vehicle, you're right on top of this. You know, because the parking lot is like, if I park here, the towers are maybe a few feet back. It's not a quarter of a mile that I can, I mean, I'm not an architect. I'm not an engineer, but it's definitely too close for comfort for me. And I'd like to know, are these leased out? Who owns that land? Why was that area selected? I mean, Ski Beach, if they put them over there, it's not near as close as we are.
Ed, do you have any info? Ed is our engineer.
Oh, okay.
There's a few there. I believe we're talking about two sites, right? There's a monopole that's located on the Shalom House property.
Shalom House owns that?
That's my understanding, but, but I don't know that for sure.
Okay.
Uh, it's not operated own or operated by the city. Uh, so I, you know, I can check at the tax office to find out who the fact.
I would appreciate that.
But my understanding is it is maybe more Shalom House property that maybe they lease it. I don't, but I can check that out. As far as the water tower, we do, the city then does lease the water tower space to sell company. They provide at the time of their application, our engineering information that demonstrates that it does comply with the federal regulation. I'm not an RF engineer either, but I rely on the fact that they produce documents that say it complies with the federal regulation.
And the sad part is, is I'm sure you've probably read some studies. Maybe you have, maybe you haven't, and you know, with all due respect, it's suggested, and I have articles. Unfortunately, when I went to print them out, my printer was broke. So. There are studies that say they should not be close to schools or, and I believe also, I'm not sure what street it is. You know where the water storage plant is?
By the water tower?
No, but like, see, I'm not familiar with this area. I've only been there a couple of years. But when you come out of Shalom House, there's a, I think it's a water storage plant.
Right corner of.
Yes, yes, yes.
I think that's the HCUA compensation.
Right, that is. But next to that, there's all poles with more towers. So my concern is there's just so many of them. And it's, I'm really frightened. And you know, I wanted to know if our commissioners here have voted on this, or did they just lease this land? Did they need, you know, permission? Or how does this play? And I'm not sure. Some of these poor old souls, they have no idea what's going on there, you know? And they figure, I guess they figure, well, they'll be dead in 20 years. It's not going to matter. I mean, it's not a nice thing to say, but.
Uh, I, I think I have remembered, I think Ernie spoke with me.
Yes, Ernie spoke with me. Very nice jump.
I will tomorrow check to see about the ownership of the monopole, or at least the land where the monopole is next to the Shalom House.
Correct.
And be able to get you that information. As far as the intended in the water tower, that had been here for, they had been on top of that water tower for a number of years. So I'm not certain that this body has.
They've been in there for years because it looks like they added, that's like a talent already. It's like they added a lot more.
So I think they came and in that main building, they do change out older technology to newer technology.
And Ed, I think they were actually reducing the number and putting something else in, right? So you might see activity there, but they're taking some off, and the net was negative, if I recall. Yeah.
And small.
And smaller. Yes.
Smaller ones are supposed to be more dangerous than that 2G, 3G, 4G, 5G lower ones. And the higher ones are supposed to admit a lot more radio frequency.
These agreements go back at least, I think, 20 years.
No, but I mean, like the Shalom House didn't always have them. They might've had one or.
No, I'm talking about the water tower. Yeah.
They look like.
We don't have any, as far as I'm aware, we don't have any dealings with the monopole behind the Shalom. I don't know how long that has been here, this body.
And they don't have to get permissions.
When they constructed, certainly they did. Uh, but again, I don't have any information.
Okay.
I will find out what came tomorrow.
Okay.
Call on you with that.
Because they're saying they don't own that property. They're saying the city had to vote on it. And I don't want to drop names, but.
I'll call you tomorrow.
Okay, I appreciate it.
We don't have anything to do with that monopole property.
Okay.
And as far as we said, there were other advantages.
Yeah, they look like.
Thursday, an electric company substation back in that, in that corner back by well. Other than that, I'm not aware of any other.
And there's also, um, where Margate Terrace is on the corner of Burke Avenue, there's a little house with all electrical grids and everything. They have had four explosions there where our power goes out for days and people in that building. It is like you would think a rocket went off. And it's frightening because, you know, these old souls can have a heart attack. Like, I mean, it's scary. It jolted me just two weeks ago. And it's not the first time. I was out for a walk last summer and a truck came and this, one of the, um, big goofs landed on the top of the cable, was electrocuted. And the whole cable came down. I was standing right next to it. So it is frightening and I, I want to know why they're not doing something about this constantly happening. I don't know if it's an electrical issue, but I mean, you, you know, you could check with your fire company. They've been out numerous times.
That building, I'm very certain, if I understand your description, that, that's in Margate.
I think it is, yes. But it's our power going out.
So, yeah, I wouldn't have any information, nor I believe our fire department would know.
They come out the whole time.
You know, that's, that's a pump station, a well of some sort. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think it's something with electrical grids because I know the fire company has to come out all the time for this. And that's Ventor's fire company that's out, not Margate. Oh, yes. I mean, our, the fire company does, does a great job and the ambulance, and I want to thank them for that.
All right, Ed will look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Jim, do you have anybody out there?
Uh, nobody is raising their hands out in the audience.
Okay. Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Hi, Tony Morgano, one oh seven North Derby Avenue, uh, Fenton resident, taxpayer, voter for forty two years. Want to comment on the Airbnb's or your short term rentals? I live up the street. There's twenty houses and six of them now are Airbnb's. Okay, on a weekend with a one night rental becomes a nightmare for me. Even now, I got people that come on a Friday night, move out on Saturday. People come on a Saturday, move out on Sundays, middle of winter. In the summertime, it's like I said, it's a nightmare. I'd like to see the restrictions be like our neighborhood cities and have more than a one night stay. And I think it should be limited to the amount of people, I, I, to the amount of houses are up the street. I mean, right now I'm running a third of my houses are Airbnb's. There's twenty one bedrooms in there. So you can imagine what I get on the weekend. Okay. And, uh, just hope that you have mercy for the residents that live here in your realm.
Yeah, so
Commissioner Kribel will, will speak on, because we did, we're working on the restriction. Unfortunately, like you said, you're taxpayer, homeowner, voter. The, the people that live on that block, that's their property. And un- unfortunate, I, I you can't tell the person, you can't do this, you can't do that unless it's certain areas like St. Leonard's Tractor or, you know, things like that. So that is something we can't do, but we did.
So we, we've been at, we had a workshop on Airbnb restrictions. And like you said, the neighboring communities have different level, like different time periods of, of the amount of stay they can have. Venter does not. We're having a, we're having a focus group and a meeting. We'd ask you to come back on February ninth, which is only next month. And because there's a lot of, there's over two hundred and fifty, three hundred Airbnb's in Ventnor. There are more Airbnb's in the United States than there are hotel rooms. It's the largest growing. There's not, it's something that's going to be here to stay. And we as a shore community, it's going to be something we have to live with, but we can manage it better. So we're looking at extending the stay so that we're more of a, a seasonal, longer term. We don't want the day trippers. That's where we get most of the problems, according to the police department. So we're looking at more than, uh, at least a minimum of a two day, uh, stay. And some cities have a week stay. So we're negotiating that between ourselves and the rest of the, those are, that's one control we can put in place. We also have put in place a, uh, they have to have a, a, a merchant bill license. So if they're, so if you do have, we have roughly two, three, four real problem properties a year. Within three hundred, that's not too bad. But if you're saying that you have a problem with noise or with overcrowding, then you can call the police department and they can start to keep record of, uh, of calls. And then if the, if the owner doesn't comply, we can take that license away and, and they lose that privilege. Those are some of the controls we have. Most of the time, those complaints are from people getting in and out of cars at night because people, because the day trippers come down and they go to the, they go out at night, they come back that one evening and they're loud. Or they have, and, and so we're hoping that at least a two night minimum was going to stop that. And we want to get it in place before the summer.
Okay, I'd like to see that be at least a three night minimum. And would you hire, are you going to hire anybody to police this or?
The police department polices it.
Just police department?
Well, we have, we have a full, you know, we've got, we've got, we're platoons on twenty four hours a day. So there, if you need something, they'll be there in minutes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
February ninth.
February ninth, right here.
Yes. Anyone else, Jim?
No.
Okay.
Get up to
Get up to the microphone.
State your name and address.
Well, I'm, I'm changed running and I live at Shalom House two. And I'm, I'm just, I'm worried too about the same thing with the, the tower thing. Because it, because people say that, that people get brain cancer from them too.
Okay, so you have the same concerns.
The same concerns, yeah.
Okay.
And, and it feels like, it feels like, it feels like it's uncomfortable. It seems like no one doesn't care.
No, we care. Trust me.
I mean, but I'm sixty one years old, so I, I get scared because I, I'm, you know, I don't know what's going to happen next. You know what I mean?
Yeah, so
you know.
Some of the information says that you should be, it should be at least four hundred meters from where you're spending a lot of time.
See, I'm, I'm on a, I'm on a corner of it.
Yeah.
You know, where, where the towers are at. And I could, I mean, I could look over and I could see them right there, next to my, you know, where I live at.
Right.
So it is kind of scary, you know?
Yeah. And they ha- and they have them throughout the city.
See, but the problem is, I mean, I mean, I mean, none of you, none of you's lived near, near that. That's the problem. We, I mean, we live near it, so it scares us more.
Mm hmm. Right.
You know?
Unfortunately, it was there before you moved in there.
Yeah, I know, but, but that, but that wasn't, not as many now as there today.
You think there's more?
Yeah.
There's more, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, five G wasn't there.
Right.
Well, Ed's going to look into it.
And it is one more issue I want to address is about the cars that come, you know, you know, with Shalom House in the back of Shalom House is that? In back of Shalom House, there's like cars, they race, race at night, at, at, at nighttime, the cars come by and race real, real loud.
That back street?
Yeah. I was wondering if, and then we can have like cops come around at nighttime, you know?
Because we paved it so nice now.
Yeah.
Now the cars go fast.
Right.
See, when, when it was bumpy, they didn't go fast, right?
And, 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 but now it's a scare because you never, somebody walk across where you get hit, you know what I mean? Because the car, some of these cars don't care. They just go
Right.
And, and they, they don't set the speed limit. So they just go, you know, and fly around a corner. So, you know.
And the lighting's not great either.
Exactly. The light's not too great either. So that's not a problem.
Yeah.
Is there anybody, someone could address the issue about putting more lights back on that side?
So, uh, I would very forget it.
Appreciate it, yeah, because it's, it's kind of James Runyon.
James Runyon?
Yes, mm hmm. Yes, Shalom House, yeah. Yeah, I just like, because, because it gets scary, you know?
It's dark. I know.
You know, because you never know.
And like I said, we paved it so nice when it was bumpy. People couldn't go fast because
Exactly. And they, they, they go, they go over, like I said, they go over the speed.
There's certainly, I know, that people don't follow. I live in the heights and they run right through the stop signs.
So once in a while, I'll see cops come once in a while, well, come by once in a blue moon, but not as much anymore. You know what I mean?
Right. Well, Commissioner Kribel oversees the police department. I'm sure he'll
Right, I mean
Make a mention to them and they'll, they'll go around there.
I mean, I mean, I mean, if you don't mind addressing an issue, you know, I mean, like, take care of it.
No problem.
Right.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight in the rain.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Okay. We're good, Jim?
You're good.
Okay. Do I have a motion to close public portion?
Motion to close public portion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we don't have an executive session?
No executive session.
I imagine that. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.